Appreciate everybody coming, getting involved with the process. Commissioner Sykes has agreed to lead us in an invocation and pledge. You would all rise, gentlemen, please remove your caps.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to discuss the county's business. Be with us as we go through each item on the agenda. Help us to reach the right decisions for the citizens of the county. Be with the ones that are not here. Be with the ones that have traveled, that will be on the road. Give them a safe trip home. We thank you for all you've done for taking the storms out of our way. And continue to protect us as we go. And thank you for loving us in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Sykes. All right. Any adjustments to the agenda? If not, a motion to approve?
Sub moved.
Cook and Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moves us to public comments. Man, if I can get my thing. Each speaker may speak for three minutes. Group spokesperson may speak for eight minutes. Begin, please, when you get to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Comments shall be civil. No personal attacks, obscenities, derogatory or slanderous remarks or comments regarding candidacy for public office. Speakers should not expect the commissioners to engage in dialogue or answer questions. This is your time to tell us what's on your mind. I only have one name on the list. Mike McDonald, come on up.
As you just heard, my name is Mike McDonald, and I reside at Northeast 28th Street on Oak Island. I want to start by thanking and commending this body for applying for the grant to extend water lines to the Mulberry Road community. I hope this will be a first step in providing clean drinking water.
Appreciate everybody coming, getting involved with the process. Commissioner Sykes has agreed to lead us in an invocation and pledge. You would all rise, gentlemen, please remove your caps.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to discuss the county's business. Be with us as we go through each item on the agenda. Help us to reach the right decisions for the citizens of the county. Be with the ones that are not here, be with the ones that have traveled, that will be on the road. Give them a safe trip home. We thank you for all you've done for taking the storms out of our way and continue to protect us as we go. And thank you for loving us in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Sykes. Quite right here. All right. Any adjustments to the agenda? If not, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Cook and Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moves us to public comments. Man, if I can get my thing. All right. Each speaker may speak for three minutes. Group spokesperson may speak for eight minutes. Begin, please, when you get to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Comments shall be civil. No personal attacks, obscenities, derogatory or slanderous remarks or comments regarding candidacy for public office. Speakers should not expect the commissioners to engage in dialogue or answer questions. This is your time to tell us what's on your mind. I only have one name on the list. Mike McDonald, come on up.
As you just heard, my name is Mike McDonald and I reside at Northeast 28th Street on Oak Island. I want to start by thanking and commending this body for applying for the grant to extend water lines to the Mulberry Road community. I hope this will be a first step in providing clean drinking water to all of Brunswick County by applying for additional grants and for budgeting for this go out of the county budget when necessary. Bringing water to all of Brunswick County is the right thing to do. Many families who have lived here for generations are having to abandon their wells due to nearby developments. It is blatantly unfair for new developments to immediately have clean water while denying it to longtime residents. Brunswick County has the 10th highest median income in the state of North Carolina with steep increases each year. The county can afford to do the right thing if we so choose. So again, I thank you for applying for the Mulberry Road grant. We will be monitoring to see what next steps are taken. Thank you for this time to let me share my thoughts and feelings.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. That concludes the public comments. Okay. Second here. Approval of the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull any? Well, I guess we already approved the agenda.
I'll move approval if no one has anything to pull.
Second.
Williams, Cook? Any discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're up to, if I can flip a page. Presentation. Bridget Flora, Stormwater.
It was included.
Okay, so it's in the agenda. Dan, can you pull that up? I didn't get most of it.
Okay, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Great. Okay, so this just provides a brief summary of the existing goals and elements of the Brunswick County Stormwater Ordinance. Our goal is to minimize the public's risk of injury, death, limited and limit damages to private property, public property caused by stormwater runoff within the county jurisdiction. Maintain and increase.
There's Flora. Get a little bit closer to the mic.
Okay, sorry. Maintain and increase the riparian buffers along the streams and waterways within the county's jurisdiction. Provide for the public's health, safety, and welfare by protecting the water quality of the county's rivers, estuaries, and other water bodies and wetlands, and ensure county compliance with all federal and state regulations. So this presentation is to bring before y'all, before you guys, the update, potential updates to the stormwater manuals that we could make now. And then also after we looked through the manual and, and put together some of the other updates, we determined we will need the ordinance to be updated as well, which will eventually, will require a public hearing that we can, need to schedule for the future meetings. But the first one, stormwater manual update number one that we're looking at is rainfall data. So basically, we're looking to replace our current rainfall data used for designing stormwater control measures to match it up with the NOAA Atlas 14 amounts. NOAA Atlas 14 is the authoritative source of precipitation frequency data for the U.S. It's, it's developed by the National Weather Service and provides estimates for the intensity duration of heavy rainfall events and their frequency and occurrence. The good thing about NOAA Atlas 14 is it uses historical precipitation data to generate its frequency estimates. And it's specific to actual locations in the county because the way our, the original rainfall data was in the county, we had one, we set inches that they used for the entire county. And this looks at each individual area of the county because it can vary extremely across the county. The data is also updated on a regular basis. The data we had previously was, hasn't been updated since we, the ordinance went into effect in 2002. And so we have found that the rainfall amounts are typically higher than what was provided from 2002. So that'll give us designers a better, a better number to use when they're sizing their SEMs. So that's something, it's a technical change that we could make to the manual that we don't see would have any issues that would affect the stormwater ordinance.
Just one question, if those were, if those amounts were updated by NOAA, then they would automatically be updated on our end. It wouldn't require future action on their part, I'm assuming they.
No, I mean, basically the designer would, when they come to develop their project, they'd pull the most recent.
Okay.
Yeah, the most recent one for their location and use that data. And like I said, it's historical data, so it's gonna use some of these larger storms we've had. It's gonna, you know, use more current information. Now, the second, so our current pre-post stormwater control requirements, which is controlling the peak discharge rate of water leaving a developed area, is one of the key factors in management of impact of new development on property adjacent to and downstream of these developments. The, our program sets a goal of no net increase in runoff occurring from the new development and is currently for the one, 10, and 25-year storm. And again, the inches mentioned here, 3.778, those are what is in our current ordinance, which is significantly, not significantly, but in some cases it could be significantly lower than what NOAA Atlas is showing us.
Was this the number that would be changed by the prior slide?
Right.
Okay.
I can go forward.
Jump to the far end of the agenda.
I'm glad we got a presentation on cybersecurity today.
Okay, so this next update to the manual we are looking at doing, which we believe probably will require an update to the ordinance as well, is the pre versus post control to add the 100-year 24-hour storm as a requirement rather than a recommendation. So right now, many of the, you know, during TRC, we're telling these large developments that, you know, we're encouraging them or recommending them to use the 100-year store. And a lot of times they are, but it's not a requirement at this point unless we add it into the manual. But the, the things could go, that could go along with that are, you know, there would be an increase in footprint and therefore cost of stormwater control, control measures, you know, possibly depending on the size of the development. It could, you know, reduce developable land, especially on smaller sites or non-residential sites, possibly making them undevelopable. What we've looked at is possibly, if we do go with the 100-year, if y'all, that's where y'all want to, you know, tell us to do. We could look at possibly exempting smaller commercial projects. If their site is so small and compact that they can't meet the 100-year requirement. I mean, of course, they would have to show that to us. I mean, they would have to do the, run the numbers and do the design and calculations. We could look at possibly, you know, exempting them from the 100-year, still requiring them to look at other higher-year storms with the 25-years still being the minimum stormwater design requirement.
Crazy. I don't know that any of us have a problem going to the 100-year. Why would we keep 25-year still on the books?
Well, that's just.
A little confused there.
That's just how it, if you look at most manual, most stormwater programs, we've always required, from the beginning, we've always required the one, they have to show us they can control the one and 10-year storm. Then when we added the 25-year, we still kept the one and the 10-year. So it would be the same thing with the 100-year. They still have to run the analysis for all of the storms.
I think the reason, my understanding is the reason you would list that there is if you had to exempt that smaller property, you wouldn't go exempt them any lower than that 25, is that correct?
Correct.
And what will we be talking, like an individual lot?
Just a small, I mean, you know, one, a commercial site that's say, you know, an acre that they're, you know, putting a building on and they need to put a stormwater pond. You know, and they have to size it to 100-year. It can, I mean, there's potentially to make the site undevelopable, I mean.
Like he could, might have a, a small commercial piece property and then it can't, you don't have enough room there to be able to do the 100-year. Would that be applicable for that?
Right, exactly.
Okay. I guess the question would be, what is the minimum design?
25-year.
I know, but what is the minimum land size, I guess?
We haven't really set a minimum. I think we would leave it, you know, we would look at the design when they submit to us. And we, we could always set a minimum, you know, say if, if the site's less than five acres, you know, then, you know, and the engineer, the designer can show us that it would make their site undevelopable by having to do the 100-year. But, you know, that, so that's something we could look at. We could make them, you know, we could do a minimum size. But I think it's, it's more like, it's more gonna affect the smallest, the small sites. And we get a lot of the little one-acre, one-and-a-half-acre sites.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, the next change, our current riparian buffer requirements requires a 30-foot riparian buffer being maintained on all sides of intermittent and perennial streams, ponds, lakes, and other water bodies. It does not include wetlands. So it's basically, it's just gives a description of riparian buffers, the area of tree shrubs or other vegetations adjacent to the natural drainage way. They reduce the impact of upland sources by trapping, filtering, and converting nutrient sediments and other chemicals before they get to the natural drainage ways. And right now, we use the, the stormwater, she uses the topographic maps or the, and/or the soils map to determine what water bodies are required to have a riparian buffer. So when, when they submit their project, they have to show those delineated, like, well, they have to show their delineated wetlands. They have to show any water bodies that are on the soils map or, or the topo maps. And then if they're shown on those maps and are existing, they have to provide the riparian buffer. And right now, it's 30 feet. So this would definitely require a change to ordinance because the 30-foot buffer is called out in the ordinance as well as the manual. So we're recommending, what we would recommend, if y'all are interested, is to change both the manual and the ordinance to increase the current riparian buffer width by 20 feet to 50 feet. And then update the table of uses in the riparian buffer to make stormwater control measures prohibited in that buffer. Currently, they are allowed to be built inside the buffer. So we're saying if you have a stormwater pond you want to build, it's gotta be outside of that buffer. So you still have that buffer between the stormwater pond discharge and.
The houses.
And the houses and the, and the streams. Right. And then the third change would be, now, this would be something completely new to the manual or ordinance, is to add wet, add a buffer to the wetlands. At this point, we're, basically, section 404 wetlands would be the ones we would consider to be regulated. They are always delineated as part of the design process and approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. So we would require a 20, what we've decided, a 20-foot buffer to be measured horizontally on a line perpendicular to the delineated area of the wetland. So that would mean that area would need to be undisturbed unless there was a use in the table of uses that was allowed, such as roads, crossings, things like that.
So are you saying today you can build right up to the wetlands?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, so in conclusion, I mean, the rainfall data, like I said, we could do that. I could go update the manual tomorrow. We could do that if that's what y'all are interested in doing. The other ones, we would have to probably go ahead and set up a public hearing to discuss changes to the ordinance. And then we would put together those changes that would be required and bring them forward for that.
Okay, anybody have questions for Ms. Flora?
On the 100-year requirement, that's for the ponds, but not necessarily the conveyance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Making sure I understand.
And I would be comfortable making a motion to move forward with setting up public hearing to make, to address the changes immediately.
Well, we're in discussion, give me a minute, now then we'll accept that motion.
Well, I was gonna ask, what did you say you could go ahead and do before the public meeting?
The rainfall data, just the NOAA Atlas 14.
Well, that's not, yeah, that's not, okay.
Yeah. That's just updating our current data, which is 20-something years old.
I got, okay.
What an update.
Yeah.
Marty, you have anything?
Well, the only thing is, I'm curious as to how the rainfall data is acquired.
The weather service, they monitor, they.
It's various because I have gauges in my yard and like with the last storm, I had two and a half inches. And Mike, you, how much did you have? You had seven and a half?
Yeah, seven, just over seven.
So you're having a wide, diverse perspective in so much as, you know, I've seen this before. In Leland, you can have a flood and cars are getting swamped out. Schalotte's not getting but maybe an inch or two. Calabash is getting hammered. BSL gets hammered. So how do you, how do you make it fair and equitable when you really just have to broad brush the thing?
Well, like I said, it's historical data, so they use the data. They, they take the measurements all over the county, you know, and then they average it. So it's, you know, yes, you're gonna have extreme storm events, but that's not gonna necessarily affect the rainfall data per se directly. But that's why also the.
It's an aggregate in other words.
It's aggregate number. And then that's why also say Leland does have historically, over the past few years, their rainfall has been higher, then it's gonna show as higher. And then when someone comes to develop in that area, those are the numbers they're gonna use versus numbers from Calabash.
Yeah, we have been talking to meteorologists and everything. And we've been thinking possibly that we've got where we have the Cape Fear River inlet, there are two sea breezes that are converging and that may cause low pressure to hang there and give them more rain. And the same thing possibly down there at the jetties, you know, at Little River. And so it seems like a, a new amount of rain for both those locations compared to the other areas in the county. I just was curious how to make it fair. So evidently it's an aggregate, so.
Right.
I guess just a follow-up question to that. So just to clarify, I think, I think you made this clear, but I want to make sure the numbers are specific to that part of the county. So it's Leland's numbers are what will affect what's happening in Leland. Or St. James won't be based on Leland numbers, it'll be based on St. James numbers.
Right, they will use that location of their project and.
And then for the aggregate, how long of a period of time does it aggregate? Or is it just everything on record to date? Or how, maybe it was in a two-year period, or do you know how long, how far back?
They update it as needed. I think that I've read that there was minimum a five-year.
Okay.
But, but they do update it as needed too sometimes.
Yeah, that, that's a good enough to get a real average, so I think that makes sense.
Yeah, Bridget, what, I, I have a motion, but I just want to be clear. What, what do we, what are you asking us to do today?
If you like our proposals, then that's what we're gonna move forward with. The 100-year, looking at possibly exempting smaller sites, and then adding the buffers, or increasing the buffers and adding wetland buffers.
So, Mr. Chairman, to add on to that, so what we'd ask for you today would be to kind of give, give an indication that you're in favor of us moving forward with those updates to the manual that we can make today regarding the rainfall data. So we'll go ahead and do that this week. But for those other things that we're talking about, we need to set the public hearing. And staff recommends the date of November 17th. That will give us plenty of time to work with the attorney, make sure everything is, is legal, and to get this thing advertised out appropriately in the papers so that you could theoretically take action on November 17th.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
No. I want to second his motion.
What's gonna ask, come clear, did any of this change your motion?
The only, the only thing that I would ask is whenever you come back with the data on the buffer for the wetlands, I'd really like to know what coastal communities only do 20-foot. I'd like to know if it's, if some coastal communities do a whole lot more than 20-foot.
Okay.
And I'd like for that to be part of the discussion and part of our consideration.
Okay.
When it comes back.
All right, so your motion is to go ahead with the 100-year?
I'll utilize November 17th as the, as the date.
Motion to schedule a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I got a motion, I have a second. Thompson, Sykes. Anybody have anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Information technology, come on down, team. Come up to the podium, Commissioner Cook has a proclamation to read and present.
I'm gonna read from here.
Okay.
Just just for a second, I want Frank Williams to stand up and David Stanley to stand up.
This can't be good.
I don't know what this is about, uh.
We all got the memo today. All the same stuff, the uniform.
It's what was clean. Like, that was ominous.
Yeah.
Y'all come in front in the front, that way they
So the camera, and so the camera could pick you up?
So they could see our IT people.
Or you could present.
Where do you want me?
Uh, right there.
Yeah, read it from there and then go around to present.
I always get the call.
Awkward, I'm sorry, I gotta be on camera or something, I guess, so. In full disclosure, I use a lot of computer equipment, so the thing is, uh, we appreciate what you guys did. And I'm gonna try to read this without stumbling. Brunswick County offers the Commissioners Cyber Security Awareness Month in Brunswick County, twenty twenty-five. Whereas digital technology is intensely integrated into nearly all aspects of our lives, amen, including daily communication, the workplace, critical infrastructure, and online security, and whereas the increasing progression of technology presents new and evolving cyber threats that pose continual risks to individuals, businesses, and our local communities. And whereas Cyber Security Awareness Month provides a strategic opportunity each October to educate our employees and encourage the adoption of simple yet effective measures to enhance online security. And whereas this year's theme, Stay Safe Online, emphasizes the power of small, everyday actions that will make a big difference in safeguarding our digital lives. And whereas adopting the Core Four of using strong passwords, a password manager, enabling multi-factor authentication, recognizing and reporting scams and keeping software updated enables individuals to protect themselves, their families, their workplaces from online threats. And whereas we encourage Brunswick County communities, citizens, employees to participate in Cyber Security Awareness Month by learning about the most recent cyber threats and implementing safe online practices, and specifically practicing the Core Four of cybersecurity to protect our digital domain. Now, therefore, I'm Mike Forte, Chairman, it's not me. Chairman of the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners, and on behalf of the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-five as Cyber Security Awareness Month on the sixth day of October, twenty twenty-five. Mike Forte, Chairman, and Mr. Chairman, I would like the approval of this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Well, well done.
I'm good.
Should make us all look great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, yeah, we like them shit. All right, moving on, administrative report, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, have some good news to share with five of you in the public. We've we've closed our year-end, and we've had a a positive end to the the fiscal year, I can report here. Uh, I will, as usual, I won't read everything that's on these slides to you, but if I go too fast or you have a question, please feel free to to let me know, and we'll slow down and and clarify. Uh, as you know, our population continues to grow on a a steep curve here. See, we we think uh that our population based upon the state numbers is now above one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, we're gaining something like seven or eight thousand new residents a year on average. The membership in our schools has not grown as fast uh as the counties, but it is indeed growing. Uh, you know, the the schools have already expressed their need for uh additional schools to accommodate uh this growth. Uh, the number of our employees uh has not grown at the same pace as the the population, but we now have uh just under twelve hundred employees in the in the general fund and two hundred and a quarter in the the utilities fund. You see here, the 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 curves are similar uh for our programs, though the public safety, uh environmental protection uh have have moved upward uh quite a bit, about twenty percent of our employees are in public safety, uh central services, a quarter, human services, a little a little more than a quarter, uh and cultural and recreational. Those those are percentage growth, not of of the total, I should should say. Uh, and uh our water and wastewater customers over over the last five fiscal years, you see, see now, uh, we have sixty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-five water customers and just under thirty-five thousand wastewater customers as compared to to five years ago. Our average daily treatment uh over the time, uh we had over seventeen thousand gallons. Again, this is average. Uh, we certainly have daily peaks, as you know, higher than this, but seventeen million a day uh with the capacity at at thirty million. Uh, our sewer treatment has run almost nine million a day with capacity of over thirteen million. Our enterprise is Water and Sewer Operating Fund has grown along with our flows and our and our customer base over the the years, a fairly equal curve across that time to the point uh that we in twenty twenty-five had a hundred and seventeen billion in revenues, uh about eighty-seven million in expenses and thirty-seven million for capital project transfers. Let's see, I think my magic button has gone to sleep. Can you?
All right, and all our IT people left.
Wait a minute, we got, we got one on.
I was, I was I was gonna say, is this gonna be like the Carolina football game and everybody's gone when I'm halfway through?
That's every game, doesn't it?
Nothing's like a Carolina football game.
They have a football team?
Yeah.
Hmm, uh, uh, there's there's no empirical evidence to prove that they do. At least, there's no evidence they have a defense. Uh, okay, this is our pledged revenue debt coverage ratios. As you you can see here, uh, we are well within uh our our pledged ratios and have plenty of capacity uh for our debt. You you can advance it. Uh, our general fund summary for the uh the year that ended, we had three hundred and sixteen million in revenue. Our expenditures were two hundred and eighty and a half million, and and we transferred uh uh a bit over forty million to other funds.
And so that makes expenditures greater than the revenue, right?
Well, we don't count transfers as expenditures.
But if you add the transfers.
If you add transfers, yes.
It becomes expenditures is greater than revenue. You spend it. Even though it transferred, it was spent.
It it was moved, it wasn't spent, it's.
So uh I would actually have expected those two numbers together to have been a expenditures over revenues of about twenty million uh based off of the prior year's results, where we were planning on spending fund balance down. Uh, so if you make that twenty million decrease as your gauge, uh two million decrease is we outperformed what our goals were by eighteen million dollars.
Okay.
Apparently, it's working again. There we go. Okay. Okay, all right, here's our debt service. Uh, as you see, in twenty twenty-five, it was just under fourteen million. Uh, and it's actually uh primarily because some bonds have been paid off is is why the debt service has dropped over the prior year. Our ad valorem tax revenues, if you see the upward curve there, uh twenty twenty-five, it was just under a hundred and eighty-three million dollars. Our real and motor vehicle property tax collection rates, uh we're at ninety-nine point two one percent for twenty twenty-five. And motor vehicles are for all practical purposes of a hundred percent because of the the way it's now collected.
Steve, could we go back one slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I I was, as we were changing, it caught my eye. I'm sorry, move on.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Say, the 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 columns look a little bit different there, but it's really only an incremental difference in in the
That's what I was looking at.
In the actual rate.
Point three, ninety-nine point two one. Like, but it caught my eye just as you were shifting. I went, wait a minute.
Yeah, it's 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 it it's about the same.
Yeah.
A our assessed value history in in billions, uh see, at the at the end of twenty twenty-five, it was fifty-three point three billion. Uh, of course, we've had a reval in twenty in twenty-three that uh that that bumped us up. But from twenty twenty-one to now, you have a a gain of twenty-three billion dollars. That will be coming up again in twenty-seven for revaluation, of course. Our sales tax and internal governmental revenues, uh you see, uh significant growth there too. Uh, sales, sales tax uh has been strong and through the first of this fiscal year, also strong, but al- almost uh up up to to fifty million now in sales tax. Our permits fees, sales and services, uh twenty-two point four million in uh sales and services and ten point three million in permits and fees. Our total fund balance at at the end of the uh the fiscal year was one hundred and forty-eight point three million dollars, and the amount that is not otherwise obligated was a hundred and seven, a hundred and eleven point seven million dollars. Our fund balance plus net transfers to other funds uh is now at about thirty-five percent, which exceeds your target, actually. We do have some some concerns for the the future. Uh, our opioid settlement funding priorities, uh we need to make sure that, you know, they meet the proper compliance. We're continuing PEGO funding for county capital improvement plan projects is feasible. Uh, we're completing the design and will be ready to start the construction of the DHHS EOC building. There will be continued growth, and there will be effects on county services and infrastructure needs for our government, our water and sewers and schools. And I will say yet again, for the record, it is my professional belief that residential growth does not pay for itself, and that over time, as demands for services increase, it will likely indicate that our ad valorem taxes would would need to increase unless we have very significant commercial and industrial growth. Uh, we need to continue to invest in economic development projects. Uh, employee retention is very important because we are a people and service organization, and you have to have good productive people to to make that work. And there are upcoming really known and unknown legislative changes. Certainly, there changes from the federal level that within another fiscal year potentially will have very significant impacts uh on either programs you will need to consider funding, or you will need to consider possibly changing levels of them. Uh, we still don't know the final direction the General Assembly is gonna take with regard to development rules. Uh, we don't know of any of the federal cuts that we know are now law, but are mostly occurring in the future. We don't yet know if the state of North Carolina is gonna absorb those costs, a portion of those costs, or tell us if we want the programs to continue to pay for them. And they're very significant cost involved. Uh, the just the the Medicaid cuts that went into effect a couple of weeks weeks ago, about three hundred and twenty million statewide. Uh, and for us, we're gonna give you a detailed, some detailed information, uh I think at our next meeting, but this could be a couple of hundred thousand dollars for the county annualized. So it's not, even at that level, it's significant, and I think the state is telling us that the SNAP benefit cuts that are coming would cost the state twice that, seven, seven hundred million or so a year. So if if things are shared with us, you you are gonna have some challenges, but overall, as I say, it's very, very positive report, I think. We also have some recommendations that you, can you pull up the item? Of some some capital items that we would recommend that that we discussed during last year's budget process that we thought we might wanna talk about and recommend uh that you consider paying out of year-end funds if you can can we get that to a point people can can read it? Roll it up there. We're recommending Okay, we're recommending uh that you consider an additional ten thousand dollar transfer uh for
Ten million.
Ten million uh for the uh primarily for the funding, additional funding of HHS EOC. Uh, and that would bring you down to thirty-four percent of expenditures. Uh, and that's that's well within your your policy of twenty-seven to thirty-five percent. You could roll this on up, please. Uh, the other things that we didn't have in the budget but suggested you consider it now were uh three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of one of our county fuel site tanks, uh four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for some dump trucks for operation services. A hundred and fifty-seven thousand to replace our time clock. $157,000 to replace our time clocks. They, we have a proprietary system and they're basically at the end of life. We would like to have an additional ambulance besides the ones already authorized. And this really basically would be to increase our spare fleet. We wouldn't even propose to outfit it at this time, but we think we can get one fairly quickly at the current cost. And 106,500 for some equipment for parks and rec. Again, if you approve these, there's a budget amendment here to do that and your fund balance would still be 33%, which is near the top of your range of 27% to 35%.
That ambulance does not have the equipment on it either.
We were not proposing that at this time, but we had an opportunity to get one that could be delivered quickly. And since we're proposing it to increase our spare ratio, which is something we need to do, we weren't asking for the equipment funding at this time, but this is, I won't say it'll be gone tomorrow, but this is an opportunity we had to get an additional one.
And we just got very recently, what, six, seven?
We got, we got, we got seven and we're gonna have a little show and tell for you at your next meeting of those. But our demand is growing and our fleet is aged.
I think it's important to note that those seven, we didn't order seven ambulances at one time. Some of those have been ordered three or four years ago. Yeah, I just think it was important to note that.
Yep.
When are they going to get on the street? I see them stretched around one of our buildings, just sitting there parked. I mean, are they going to get in use pretty soon?
Your county manager would certainly hope that they would and the rest of his management team feel the same way. We've had a procurement issue with a relatively insignificant part that wasn't available when they got here. And they will be here, I hope even by two weeks from today. But there's, there's a.
An issue.
There's, there's, there's an issue with a piece of mounting hardware, basically, that somehow didn't come at the same time as the vehicles. But mechanically, I think we're good to go.
I make a motion, I usually don't approve budget amendments, but I'm going to make a motion that we approve this budget amendment.
I'll second.
Sykes and Williams, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll have one of those ambulance here on hand on the 20th, so our next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so when's that presentation? All right, moving on. Sheriff's office, Mr. Emery.
Afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Here on the, this was originally leave on the consent agenda, move to the presentation. This is for a lease for additional office space to fulfill the needs, especially in our investigative division. I believe you have seen the terms of the agreement. It's going to be $24,000 annually. The budgeted funds will be, well, the funds will be coming out of the, pardon me, the federal drug seizures, money for which the balance currently, I believe, is somewhere in excess of $100,000. This will be in the supply here. And it's with the contractors with BEMC for 2,800 square feet of property that should hold. Should be large enough to house approximately 17 members of the sheriff's office with office space. And I'm here to entertain any questions you may have.
There's 17, how many we have in the drug, excuse me, in the drug unit?
DU plus spec ops, yes, sir.
Any other questions, Mr. Emery?
No questions, just a comment, you know, I have a lease in office and my lease is more than that and my space is less than that. And I've had other people who thought my lease was low compared to theirs. So that's just, to me, I mean, if we need the space, that's a pretty good rate in this market.
Yes, sir, we shopped around and it's significantly less than anything else we could find.
Okay, my question, I have several questions. One, you're saying that the funds are coming out of the drug seizure funds, right?
That's my understanding from federal drugs money.
Is that going to be coming out every year for rent?
No, I believe the intent is for this year for it to come out of there and then to have it go to the formal budget.
So then it's going to fall into an expenditure down the road for the general fund? Is that what you're saying? That you're not going to pay it after the first year out of these funds?
The second year, we'd be asking for funds, right, that's correct.
Okay, the other question would be, what's going to be stored there besides having an office? Are you storing anything there?
There's no intent for a store, it's not a store.
There's no files, nothing like that will be stored there?
I mean, there may be some files there.
So then my next question would be, do you, is there an alarm system already on the building? Is there cameras? I don't think you're going to put, have a, you would need to have security. So that means that the area would have to be upgraded, which is more expense. You're putting a, deputies in there and you know you need internet, the metal, a building.
So this space is completely fenced in around, surrounding the entire property, has cameras and has alarm system.
Well, that was my question. Okay, fence, alarm and cameras, okay? Is the utilities included?
That's correct.
Okay, if you look at the diagram of the building, it shows that the 2,800 square feet, the measurement that I see on there is two measurements. One is 4,000. Let me sort it, I do with it.
4,300.
It's the last page, yeah. It was 4,300 at the bottom, 4,325. I see that you're, you're saying the 2,800 square feet is the red. Is that what you're saying, in red?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I don't think 1,500 square feet would be the little, the sections that's not included there. So if you look here, there's 4,325 and you're renting 28. So you're saying that that much is left over over here? That looks bigger than 2,800. I don't know, I'm asking. It's showing 4,300 square feet.
We're just going by what it says here. I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, how can you rent 2,800 square feet when there's 4,300 and what's left over that you're not going to rent? It can't be, if you subtract that, that's what, 1,500 or so? 4,325, 2,800. It's 1,525. So you have 1,500 square feet left over. That doesn't look like 1,500 square feet. If you've, really, I mean, it looks like you're renting more than 2,800 square feet.
Well, the price is locked in by the lease, so.
I'm glad.
Well.
If it is, then I'm getting a better deal.
But you can house 17 individuals there, which is optimum, is what you're looking for anyway, because you're running out of space.
But.
We're not running out of space, we are out of space. We have nowhere to put people. We've got positions that are starting January, we have no offices for. So this was a financially responsible solution to the problem versus trying to come to the commissioners to build us a brick and mortar building, which is.
Right, and I get.
This is a temporary, long-term solution.
Yeah, I get that, right.
Okay, so I'm saying that it's going to cost more than 24,000. Now, you're shaking your head no. Okay, who's going to do, who's going to clean the offices, nobody? Who's going to pay the electric bill, nobody? Who's going to cover the insurance?
Utilities are included.
That's what I asked.
He said, yes.
He said, yes.
No, you look and I don't think it's in the agreement. Is it in the agreement?
It's silent in the agreement, but they are included.
I want it on paper. So I say it's not included because it's not there. Now, with that said, you need janitorial, you need insurance on the building, you need telephones, you need internet and you need furniture. Does that not cost more money than 24,000?
We have the internet capabilities to handle what we need to do. This is going to be the cost for us for sheriff.
So you've tested the building for the internet because, does it have a metal roof? Because I can tell you inside metal roofs, you have to put something else up to make the internet work. I'm just saying, I think we need more of a cost, what it will actually cost to bring this up to use. And the other thing is, we have an old library that the sheriff's office is using. What's in that old library? What's in the old, old library that we?
Center, we have storage, there's files that we have to keep the law in there.
Is that a fireproof library area for files? I mean, you're supposed to have a fireproof storage for certain things. Am I not right? I mean, where's the fireproof office or area, storage area for files that needs to be maintained?
Sitting right next to the backup center, so it's, it was all inspected. It was all built out by, and the fire marshals and it was all inspected, so I mean, it's.
I've never heard of that y'all have a, because you used to have one in the fire, in the sheriff's office and it was tore down. It was taken down. The fire proof room. Let's see, let me find my notes here. I must have left it at home. You're supposed to have a fireproof storage. You, but there's not, there's not a fireproof files area that I'm aware of.
At the sheriff's office.
No, there's not one. I, it's my understanding it was taken down by sheriff finger. I don't know if that's, I mean, y'all in the office every day, I'm not over there, I don't know. I'm asking these questions.
We'll.
I think.
Fire marshal would like to come and see, then.
That's fine. Okay, but what I would like to do is hold off on this and bring it back at the next meeting with more information. You tell me how much it's going to cost for insurance, telephone, furniture, janitorial.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the covers that we have with the county is going, this is covered in that. That's what we're discussing in the contract. As far as the utilities, like I said, utilities are covered, the internet is covered.
They have all that. With insurance, it has to be added.
Right, we covered that, correct?
We will add the premises under our insurance policy, but we're not going to have to expand the policy.
And the space is furnished by.
I still say that you need to come back with more information, but that's just my opinion. I just don't think we need to be spending money unless everything is together.
Any other questions? And I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Forte Cook, any discussion?
No, I do have one thing, because it sounds like you're going to check into it. Having a fire inspection background, I don't believe the fire marshal is going to be able to help you out with that. Because if you've got some regulatory requirement for your records, that's with whoever your regulatory agency is with, it's not with the county fire marshal just to help you out going down that.
I will make sure that we have the appropriate room for the file that we have.
Okay, works for me.
And I will, I will check, absolutely.
Any other points?
Well, I think probably, you know, you probably covered bi-directional amplifiers, so you probably got that. Because we're putting it in all buildings because it's mandated these days. So the ability to be able to interact through a steel building is not an issue any longer.
The internet's already there.
That's right, yeah.
Electric has.
Plus, you're going to be able to key up on your radios and still be able to get out because you've got BDA there.
Yeah, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
4-1. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Utilities guys.
Say that again.
Utilities guys.
How do you spell that?
G U I Z.
Good afternoon.
Going on, Brent.
How are y'all? So pleased to be here today to inform you of some grants, money that the utility has received. Another grant we've received. We request the Board of Commissioners accept a grant notice of award from the US Economic Development Administration in the amount of $6,751,000 for the Mid-Atlantic Industrial Rail Park Water Tank Project and authorize the county manager to sign and submit all required grant documents. As you may remember, this project has been around for a long time. It is to build a 1 million gallon elevated water storage tank out at the industrial site north of 74, right at the county line. In 2023, the county received a Golden Leaf Grant for this project. After that, we were able to design and permit this project and we have it ready, several ready, awaiting additional funding. So now we've received the additional funding from the US EDA. So with that, we would request that you approve this.
Move approval. And I'm excited about this, this is a tremendous relief. And we heard about the grant coming in, we went, wow, this is great.
It is, yes, sir.
Yeah, I think Marty, were you making a motion?
Indeed, I was, yeah.
Make sure I heard you correctly, I'll second.
Cook, Williams, Brent, before we go into discussion, what was it we applied for? It was less than half of this, right?
Originally, yes, sir, I believe so.
That's incredible to me that.
Yeah, I know.
They gave us like more than double.
It was just 2 million originally. Oh, was it 2 million? It was just 2 million.
Yeah, I thought it was like two and a half, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we shouldn't believe it.
This is quite the home run.
Yeah, we've got some good people helping us and.
And as one who serves on economic development, I know how important this is, as does Commissioner Cook. I mean, this is a home run for Brunswick County.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brent.
You know, I just, just would say, you know, grants notwithstanding, we would have to pay for that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a big chunk of change and to be able to put that up there, that's going to be outstanding, so.
Real exciting.
That is your biggie. All right, Madam Clerk.
My God, there we go. The first one is Mr. Greg Hedgepath as the Bolivia Planning Board ETJ appointee.
I'll move approval.
Second. Williams Thompson, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations to Mr. Hedgepath, who is sitting right back here next to Mayor Cook.
All right, the second one is for Mr. Charles Gulas. To get him lined up with the board appointments that we do annually in May. We're going to appoint him for seven months to get us from now to then. And then he'll be in the regular cycle of our appointments in May as they come up each year.
I'm glad he's volunteering. That's a hard job to do.
We're getting quite a few now, they're really starting to roll in.
That's great.
Got some in the cog now and we are working.
Yeah, that's a tough, tough and important job.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thompson, Williams, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Lastly?
And the last one is to appoint Mr. Stone, county manager, to the jury commission. That is a biannual, every two-year appointment that comes due.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Cook, Williams, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
4-1. Four to one. Okay. That includes our agenda. Uh, anybody have anything for other business or an informal discussion?
I do. Um, I would like to, to discuss the school bond, uh, that they came, uh, last month and discussed with us. Um, I have concerns. I feel like that we need to move forward if we can, uh, to move it to the primary in, uh, March. Um, I think it's important that, uh, we don't procrastinate on moving forward because as we do, it costs more money. Um, I would like to have an open discussion of everybody's input, uh, reference how much maybe it's gonna cost, uh, to see what it's looking like. Uh, I think they met, y'all, did y'all meet today with the school? You didn't? Okay.
We're meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to hear the feedback from that meeting before, I mean, cause we did ask them to have that meeting. So I think it would be bad form for us to, us to ask them to have a meeting and do, and discuss it publicly and then us take action before we give them a chance to do what we asked. I still think that we, I know, I know we need to do it, but I still think the general election is better. That's just my, my take on it.
Well, my feelings on the election is if people want to vote, they need to come out for the primary just as much as they come out for the general. So if they have a concern about the bond, they'll come and vote. So that means what, at least we'll get voters. Uh, I think that we need to go ahead and move forward. And if, let's say that they meet tomorrow, can, can we still have time to bring it back to vote, to move forward? Uh, is there time enough to have that discussion at the next meeting?
If, yeah, yes. If, if you took action on October twentieth, uh, we could meet the timeframes. There would be for the primary, if that's what, what you so directed. There would be a slight chance you would need to have a special meeting in, in December, but it, it should be doable without that. If a final decision was made on October twentieth.
How about we put on our October twentieth agenda that the Board of Education comes to us. They should have a firm number. I know that as of this moment, it's all over the place, right? I'm hearing three different numbers out there. How about on November twentieth, they come and make a proper presentation to us with a definitive number? Um, and tell us where they're at, what the dollar figure is, and we take it from there.
Chairman, can I get, you said November twentieth, we're talking October twentieth?
Correct.
You said November twentieth or October?
October.
October twenty, two weeks from today.
Yeah, right.
Did I say November?
Yes, somebody said November.
Oh, I apologize.
Can I, I, I'm gonna ask, uh, the superintendent, do y'all have a firm figure yet? Are y'all still working on a figure?
Uh, we, uh, are working on a couple of different options. Uh, I shared a different option at our last meeting that our board is currently reviewing. And then we have a meeting tomorrow night, um, where we're gonna discuss that option and possibly one other. Um, and that's just based on the feedback we got from you guys at our last meeting. That's the reason why we're adjusting. So it was just, we, we were not prepared to come before this body.
That's fine.
Today.
I just wanted to bring it up because my concern is, is moving forward and, uh, we also have some other issues that are arising in the near fu- future. And I don't want the school system to be hurt because of other issues also. Uh, as discussed when he did the, the budget, uh, ended the year discussion, the things it's gonna cost. We don't know what Medicare is gonna do. We don't know what the tax, the fire tax situation is. We don't know anything. So it's, I just think we need to move forward with schools. So, um, anyway, that's just my idea of just having a discussion on it.
Yeah. The one thing we do know is that, uh, we're gonna continue to grow our student body is, and construction costs will continue to go up. We know both of those things. So I agree with you. Thank you.
So I am, uh, he made a, you made a motion.
Uh, I suppose, yes. Saying it's a motion that we have the Board of Education come and make a proper presentation to us on October twentieth.
I second.
Can I, can I ask a question first?
Yes.
Um, would you prefer that I go ahead if I can get their number tied down, uh, to go ahead and get the first action that will be required by the board, ready and waiting post their presentation, uh, to ensure that we don't have to have a special called meeting?
If we do that, I would like for you to have options for the primary and the general election available.
Yes.
So, so, uh, the only thing that will be required as far as moving it forward in, uh, at this point in time is you guys, if you say you want to move forward in, uh, primary, um, you just say yes. Otherwise, our, our job is done until, uh, probably April or May of next year, if it's getting pushed off.
Now, uh, you wanna settle that right now?
No, no, no. I'm not asking you to settle that right now. I'm saying, do you want me to be prepared if you want to move forward with March?
I think you need to be prepared.
Uh, be prepared for both options.
Yeah, yeah. Because all, if, if you decide to not do March, you just don't vote on what I prepare.
Okay.
Instead of having to wait for another meeting.
So, so we have a motion and a second that Board of Ed comes before us two weeks from today on October twentieth to make a presentation on a fixed number and we take it from there. That was one very lengthy. But that's what it is.
But we'll stay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, I got one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, I, I have some concerns, um, about different things here at the county. Um, so I'm just gonna make this statement. On November the eighth, two ta, two thousand and twelve, the citizens of Brunswick County voted me as their District Three Commissioner. Winning my first primary election on May the eighth, two thousand and twelve, in a four-way race was very unusual. I was honored. Each election, I have had an opponent in the primary and, and the general election due to certain individuals, including some in this room, searching out and helping those candidates. In each one of these elections, I have retained a high vote from the citizens. But during the last four years, I am being cut off from representing my constituents. In September of twenty-two, I sent an email to staff and other commissioners about concerns and there was no response. I continued to make requests, but for some unknown reason, I continued to get a no answer or a half answer. Not sure half the time what the truth really is. This year, I requested from the manager to schedule meetings, reference the fire tax and another meeting about sewer. The meetings have to date, not included me, until this afternoon, he come and said that he would, uh, uh, schedule a meeting. Our meeting in September with the school board presented the school bond. The staff and commissioners were part of that laser meeting too. However, I was never updated on the bond issue until that night. With the fire tax coming at the same time as the school bond, this is going to be a nightmare for all of us. Procrastination and putting a Band-Aid on issues and spending, just like we did today, where there is no need, has created all of this. I'm tired of getting updated by the citizens of the county on issues of the county that have never, that I have never been advised or updated on. I get calls constantly, did you know this? But you need to know, as an elected commissioner, I represent the public. I am supposed to serve the, uh, serve as a link between the county government and the community, addressing concerns and advocating for the county's interests. That is why I'm requesting that when I a- ask for a meeting, I am granted one. I know we can only have two commissioners, but that is not the issue here. I also, the committee meetings that are taking place, I am requesting timely updates from this day forward. Am I making myself clear?
Comments?
I've got, I've got one thing too. Um, I noticed in our packet today, uh, that there's a letter in there from FEMA dated September the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, uh, that deals with the flood hazard determination, uh, primarily in District One, uh, primarily dealing with Brunswick plantation. Uh, can you, can you advise in just, uh, in a snippet, how we're addressing this issue?
I, I haven't looked at your correspondence packet today, so I would have to look at it before I, I could unless somebody else.
Okay. Um, that, that's cool. You also received a letter as well. So, yeah. If you can let us know back about this particular issue. Also, um, and I, I hate to take a cue off Commissioner Sykes on this one, but I did also read about a, uh, the county facing a lawsuit in the newspaper from a developer. Can we get an update on where we stand with that particular development and that particular lawsuit as it stands today?
It's on hold. The developer filed it to protect their appeal rights. At the same time, I believe they have been or shortly will submit a revised site plan, hoping to meet the planning board's criteria. Uh, we've received an extension to respond until after the planning board has reviewed the revised site plan.
Okay. And my only question, uh, that goes along with that, we do, the planning board does have county representation from legal staff there at the meetings.
Yes, sir.
Were, were they not informed that of the possibility of this creating a negative lawsuit by their decision at that meeting?
Uh, yes, sir. I believe they're advised all the time as to the criteria for approving or denying subdivisions.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
I, I regularly attended the planning board meetings and did so on a, it seems, every meeting.
Sure.
If, if, if I could add to the response particularly to, to that issue, our, our office tries diligently to share the same information with all five of you. In the, in the case of this specific issue about this litigation, over the years, there have been a number of times over various development-related issues that some litigation has been filed. And we have, I think, really going back through several administrations, have largely viewed those as administrative activities rather than, say, if somebody sued us because we did or didn't do some, something else. And normally other litigation, we do promptly let the five of you know, this particular type of litigation in the past, we wouldn't, but we've already discussed it internally. And if we get any more development litigation over denials, we will in the future go ahead and let you know about them as we do other litigation also since in the current climate.
And.
There's a probability there will be more similar litigation.
And I'm assuming that these, that these suits or claims or whatever, um, i- if they're determined to be, um, of reason, then I'm assuming that we're responsible for some type of claim from that.
Yes, ye- yes, sir. The, the, the current, the current rules are if development decisions are appealed and, and the other party wins the case, then the county is gonna have to pay their legal fees.
And where does that come out of? Fun balance?
Where, where you gonna pay? Uh, well, it, it will come out of probably just one of our operating lines. But the, the concern and just, just to remind everybody, the, the current framework is that when you set the U D O, you basically set the rules for development. And then the planning staff and the planning board are sort of like the referees to make sure that those rules are appropriately applied. And if a development interest feels that those rules were not appropriately applied, then they have the option of asking a superior court judge to take a look at it. And, and that's what's happened in this case. And the law now states if they ask for that and the judge agrees with them, that the county's on the hook
Okay.
for their legal expense.
And damages, right?
Uh, I, I, I think the legal expense is probably your main exposure.
I've got one thing. You know, it was tragic what happened, you know, a week ago with respect to shooting at Southport. It was terrible. It was, there's just words just escaped me to be able to say anything about how, you know, it was. It was just surreal and then shocking and it was just horrible. But the response was amazing to see and to hear what was happening. Cause if you listen to the activity, it was almost immediate. It was like stepping on a fire in its nest, how fast everybody did in a coordinated aspect. The thing that I would hope that we would take away from this, other than the situation at hand in and of itself, is some kind of communications perspective where we're all in the same loop because I didn't know about the, um, I didn't, I didn't know anything about the memorial and I didn't know anything about the press conference or anything until I saw it on Fox News. And, uh, I, I had no, it, it, we were covered. We were good. We had representation there, but it's just, I felt a little bit out of the loop because I had no knowledge of it. And that, the first I saw it was when I saw it on the feed from Fox News. And I thought, oh my gosh, I would have been there, you know? So if there's some way that when we have something that's, and I know we're all reeling from it. It's not something you, you know, it's a no-notice event. It's one of these things you're just having to deal with. But the thing is, if we can figure out some kind of game plan and say, all right, this is how we're gonna let everybody know or, or this is the framework. Cause I feel like maybe that could be possibly improved upon a little bit. We do a great job on storms. Great job on those kinds of things, really do. Um, you know, that we come up and do the conference calls, we get the W B O C going and we spin everything up. And that's really amazingly good. But I'm just saying, we have something that hits us. I mean, it just hits us in the gut. We've gotta make sure that we have a way that all of us, meaning administration and the commissioners and senior staff and everything on the same page and understand it. Cause I mean, I didn't get an email and I get, I didn't, I mean, I searched all my emails. I couldn't find a single thing and I couldn't find any texts or anything that, that I knew about. Maybe I was alone in that. I don't know. Maybe it went to junk. I don't know.
Well, at least you have a radio that you know what's going on.
I did, yeah.
We, we don't have that. Um, but, uh, the only reason I knew there was a press conference was it was on the news.
Same here.
I mean, if the news hadn't said that there was gonna be one, uh, I wouldn't have known either. It's my district and I still wouldn't have known.
Yeah. I think, I think we need to have some kind of game plan where somehow we get the information pushed out to all of us through some platform and we say, okay, this is the way we're gonna do it to get this information out there. So we're all ahead of the curve. And then that way, if anybody sits there and says, hey, what, what happened at the memorial? And I'm going, what memorial? You know, I, you know, I'm just saying that's an awkward thing.
Commissioner Cook, in, in the case of both that memorial and the press conference, I don't, I'm not sure there was official, I don't know how the memorial was noticed. Some, a, a third party did it on social media, I think.
But there was basically two remorse. Uh, we had one at the church, which the fire department put on and they've got word out. And then the generations did it uh, this weekend because she was a member of the generation church. So.
And, and I attend there and I didn't get notice of that. I, I didn't know about it till after it occurred.
I didn't either. I mean, I, I, but everything, I heard it on the news. It was, it was told on the news. So.
I, I.
But just, I mean, look, I'm not.
But just, I mean, look, I'm not, I'm not throwing rocks at anybody. I'm not.
I know you're not.
That's not my plan here. I'm just saying that if we have something that hit us, hits us like a tornado or something, you know, something that we all need to be spun up, because we, none of us like to be caught by surprise on anything, and we always want to be very supportive of whatever's going on. But if we have some kind of game plan, we know, all right, this is the way we're going to communicate. That way, we get the information out to everybody at the same time. We all know this is the game plan. This is what's happening.
And, and I agree with you, sir. I was just trying to, to say to you in...
You weren't a little...
In the case of the two specific things you mentioned, we kind of weren't in the loop.
Yeah.
Either. I mean, I, I, I found out about the press conference when I received a, a text not long before it was...
Yeah, and I, and I'm...
Going to be held, and to say, I, one, one of the memorials I didn't even know was occurring till after it happened.
I mean, I, I, I think you, overall, I think we do a fairly good job overall. I mean, a lot of phone calls start taking place and everything happens. We try to spin up as fast as we can, but knowing how we have this from a uniform aspect of how something triggers, how do we get that information out? And we know everybody's on the same page. That's my concern. But nobody, I don't, I don't think anybody made anything wrong. I'm just saying, I, this was such a terrible thing.
We, we don't take it that way, and certainly Megan and I will have some discussions about how maybe we can find out more about things that nobody's really told us about. We'll, we'll work on it.
Osmosis, if nothing else, right?
I certainly knew nothing of the memorials, uh, either one of them. I found out about the press conference through the Southport mayor.
And similar situation to, you know, to Commissioner Cook's point, I don't think anybody intentionally left anyone out. And I think we also need to note that the memorials were not organized by the town. They were organized by private organizations and churches who probably notified everybody they thought to notify, and it happened very quickly. It was, um, also, I mean, this unfolded quickly, and I personally hope we never have to deal with it again, but if we do, it'd be, you know, if we hear about things, maybe we can help keep each other informed if we know about them. You know, I found out about the press conference, I think, about thirty minutes before it happened. Um, but I hope we never have to deal with that again. That was terrible.
Me, me either.
Ah, any other comments? Somebody say...
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second Commissioner Sykes' vote.
Pick one. It was Williams and Sykes.
There we go.
All those in favor, rise.